There are members of the public here this evening.
All right, I see I've kept not looking at my list.
Your fan club, yes.
Good evening, I would like to call the February twenty-fourth Portola Valley Town Council meeting to order. Roll call please, Sharon.
Councilmember Alfs.
Here.
Councilmember Wernickeoff.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Here.
Mayor Derwin.
Here. Oral communications, this is the part of the evening when anyone wishing to address the council on a subject that is not on the agenda may do so. However, we cannot undertake a discussion or action. Each person gets up to three minutes and may speak once. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak under oral communications? Sharon, are there any hands raised?
Yes. Betsy Morgan Thaler.
Betsy.
How do you do council, thank you. Um, I wanted to reference a comment, a report that was made at the planning commission, which I attended a week ago, at which time Jeremy reported that the general plan update was going to be postponed. I, I've heard, I've been attending the vast majority of town council meetings for the last two years now. And I've heard so often staffing council reference the import of the general plan, anticipating the public's involvement and the, the care with which you were put, you were assembling what you had to, to gear up for it. So I was looking forward to that process wherever I sat in it, I was looking forward to the process itself for the inclusion of a broader set of people on such an important number of topics. I do understand according to Jeremy and what, and, and the news of last week, that the housing element and safety element will be pulled out and done by staff alone. I, I suppose I'm not reporting anything new to you, but I'll just say that it, I was really disappointed. And I hope that there's an opportunity to revisit that decision. I realize it's a time-consuming, two-year process typically, but we are twenty-six years with no public update to the, public meaning, resident update to the general plan and inclusion, and I consider inclusion vital and that we're already behind where we would want to be. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Betsy. Are there other folks who would like to speak?
There are not, Mander.
All right, thank you. Then we will move on to the consent agenda, the consent agenda items can be voted on once by the body, via the body, unless a member of the body requests an item to be considered separately. However, members of the public are all welcome to comment on any item on the consent agenda.
Did we lose the mayor?
May have hit the wrong button there while she was turning on the phone call.
Thank you, excuse me. Would anyone from the public wish to comment on a consent agenda item? Are there any hands raised?
There are not.
All right. Would anyone from the council wish to pull something from the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will move to approve.
Right, Jeff moved to approve second.
Second.
Okay, John had his hand up a tiny bit before Sarah, John seconded, discussion. All those in favor, roll call.
Councilmember Alfs.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards.
Aye.
Councilmember Wernickeoff. Vice Mayor Hughes.
Aye.
Mayor Derwin.
Aye.
Right, now we will move on to the regular agenda. Tonight we will have a study session about our fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two council priorities. This is an exercise that is relatively, um, I'm not sure how many years we've been doing it, but there were many years when we did not do it. I think it's a very good thing to do. This will be our first council priority setting session, there will be another in April, I believe. So this is the big, raw, robust discussion council setting session. And with that, Jeremy?
Thank you very much, Mayor Derwin, members of the council, I'm joined tonight by the management team. In order that I see them on the screen, Laura Russell, planning and building director, Brandy DeGarmo, the assistant to the town manager, Howard Young, public works director, Cindy Rotis, the finance director, and of course Sharon Hanlon, the town clerk, they're here to answer any questions and receive feedback from the council on the study session. Is the mayor referenced, this is a relatively new process that the council's undertaken, this is year five of that process. It is a very important component of the budget process that begins in January with the workshop with the commissions and committees where the council is able to hear the ideas that the chairs have shared, that have been generated through their previous discussions. This year is similar to other years where the staff is presenting some initial ideas that we hope help with the conversation, but clearly this is the council's meeting to discuss those areas of focus that you would like the budget to concentrate on in the next fiscal year. In years past, in, unless there is a desire in the council to change, the council priorities have been focused around priority areas and not necessarily projects, projects do spin out of those areas, and certainly there are projects that either run with priorities or are separate from that, but we focus on the high-level priority areas. The, um, as I say in the staff report, starting on red page twenty-one, the, the staff and its discussions thought very deeply about what's happened over the last year. And as we hopefully return to some new version of normal in the coming months and into the next fiscal year, the, the staff is very eager to concentrate its resources and time on ensuring that the service that we provide to the community is, it's a seamless transition. And if there are areas that we need to make improvements, physical, software, otherwise that we're doing that. We expect it to be exciting for residents, particularly if there's opportunities to come to the office again and the like. So we do expect to see spikes related to the types of things people are asking for us to do, so having some ability to focus on that is found to be important. There's also a ton of things that the council's already identified over the last year plus that remain critical. And starting on red page twenty-one and to red page twenty-two, the priorities are structured in a draft form around, around those issues. Clearly wildfire emergency preparedness, the council's focused on over the last two years continues to be very important and listed some examples of the types of projects and and the types of projects that would be occurring under that title. I mentioned a service delivery, the post-COVID vaccine service return, the continued technological and software improvements that the council has supported over the last years. And starting to focus on the, if the current mix of staffing is the right levels to address what we, I think have all seen is an increase in the type and manner of service provision that residents are, are requesting. Number three should be nothing unfamiliar with the, the projects listed under number three. These are major endeavors that are all happening at once. And the focus of the planning department through its current staff and consultants will be on these elements for sure over the next year. And then number four, I use the term established programming, it's, I don't know if it's the appropriate term, but there are a variety of things that, you know, even in the last year that we haven't been able to focus on so much because of COVID. The types of support we typically do for trails and getting the, some of that annual programming back on track, our communications, sustainability and facility management. So this was our attempt to give you some, some structure to what council priorities could look like in, in the, in the coming year. You know, we, I did focus a considerable amount of the staff report on the change that we see in the way and the manner which we're delivering service and the, the the interactions that we're having with the community is those become more complicated and there's a demand rightly so for more information, for more transparency, and for more involvement. So just laying the groundwork for a continued conversation around whether or not, again, the mix of staffing is appropriate. As you know, right now, we have an open FTE in the planning department for an associate and senior planner, that's a full-time equivalent. That positions funding as being used to support the consulting services that we have right now, we have four planning planners that we use in consulting basis for specific types of projects, whether it's Stanford Wedge or single family in between the two. We also have a halftime FTE that we've never filled that would support the administration department that Brandy heads up. So we anticipate coming forward in the future to talk about what that, what that could theoretically look like, we would like to hear your ideas as, as we before during the budget process on, on your thoughts on that. But I do think it's important to note that from what we're seeing that, you know, there may be some need for additional staffing and, and we've already done some internal work on that. We hope to provide you with that additional information throughout this process, I don't have anything to, to present tonight because we want to listen and hear from you about the areas that you think that you have concerns about, if there's any at all. So I hope that that was helpful, was it related to that portion of the, of the staff report. On red page twenty-three, I listed the, and it is summary, that's why we attached the minutes, the items that were discussed by each of the committee chairs at the January twenty-seventh meeting. And we're also looking for guidance tonight on how, what, what the council would like to see as it relates to supporting these endeavors, whether it's next year or in future years. I don't think I have anything else to say about that, so really we're here to listen and support your conversation for what you'd like to see reflected in the budget next year after this meeting concludes. The budget process continues, starting next week where the managers will kick off their budget building process based on the input that we're receiving. Will come back in April, as the mayor said, to provide a more formal structure for what priorities would look like in its typical format. We're going to be engaging with the committees to get us some more information about the things that they'd like to see included as well, particularly, you know, any capital items and the like. And then we would expect to come back, you know, no later than the first meeting in June with a formal budget presentation, draft budget presentation that goes to the finance committee in, in May. As you know, part of this too, for us is to start bringing forward some forecasting into the future and some, some additional data that we think we can help support this process, so it can become a more robust process reflected in some of the financial figures that maybe we'd like to provide. So at that, I'm gonna stop and would love to hear from the council, thank you.
Thanks Jeremy, questions from the council? No questions.
My question, I have a couple of questions. First is more related to process, just because I'm new, what is, what is the next step, like how is this information used, is it mostly to be like a stepping stone for the budgeting process, or is there, what is, what do we do with this information after it's agreed upon?
If I may, through the chair, so yeah, that's precisely it. The information that's collected tonight starts to give us the foundation and the contours of what the budget will look like. Our budget is small, so where it changes on the council priorities is certainly around capital projects, it can be around the way that we deploy positions, it can be in, in other areas, but there are certain expenditures that we make regardless, because it's the day-to-day operations. So this helps, it also helps focus what we understand how we're going to spend our time and tell the community we're going to be spending our time. So if the council chose, for example, wildfire and emergency preparedness, we, I think we understand from a, from a staffing perspective that there, there are projects that we'd be doing in there that are discrete, but there'd be other things that we would be bringing to you as part of the package of things that the council could support over, over the course of that year. So it's a, it's the foundation to the budget and certainly influences major portions of it. Hope that's helpful.
Yeah, and then does this then get turned into some sort of document where it's like, okay, these are the twenty, twenty-one goals, and so it's kind of the guiding document for the year, and at the end of the year, you kind of reflect back and say, okay, did we achieve these, or you know, is it that kind of process?
Yeah, through the chair, typically what we would be doing right now is to tell you how we're doing on this year's priorities, but because COVID disrupted that severely, council didn't adopt them as such. So we would be doing that reflection, both, and that's primarily judged, lack of a better word, on, you know, how the progress on projects that are related to those, those priorities. So then in, in the formal budget document, there will be a page that will have the priorities listed out with a narrative describing why these are important, what the, what the notion is behind them, what the plan is, and here's some projects that will be undertaken under, under each of those, as best part of the budget.
So I thought, um, you know, these were definitely the right buckets and broad elements within it. I think the only thing that kind of stood out to me maybe that, um.
I'm sorry, may I make just a suggestion to the chair, if we're moving into discussion, we should probably do a public comment first.
Sorry, I didn't, I thought that's what we were doing.
Yeah.
Okay, no, we're still on the question part, so here's what we do, we do questions of the council. Then we open up to questions, I like Craig smiling, then we do questions or comments from the public, and then we come back and we start discussing amongst ourselves. So do you have any more questions, Sarah?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then I think we will go to the public for comments and questions.
Great, first question, Kristy Corley.
Kristy.
Hello, thank you. I just was wondering on red page twenty-one, mention of wildfire preparedness committee's final recommendations from December eleventh, two thousand nineteen. At the October twenty-first meeting, the committee finalized the recommendations to the council and the committee presented their recommendations at the November thirteenth council meeting, and they were adopted at the December eleventh meeting, and there were sixteen short-term recommendations and to be done two thousand twenty and eleven medium term for two thousand twenty-one, and I wasn't real sure where we stand on that by reading this report. So I'm wondering if you can update us on that.
Okay, do we, do you want to update Jeremy?
Well, through the chair, the council receives quarterly updates on the status of the first recommendations that were adopted by the council in December of two thousand nineteen. The last update was, I think it was a month ago, if I'm remembering that correctly. Kristy, in lieu of taking up too much time tonight, I'll send you the, the staff report from that meeting, and you can take a look, and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me.
Okay, and then, I guess I wasn't, you said, as you know, that there's two, two positions to be filled, is the new full-time planner, is that a new position and that's been announced in a meeting? Or is that in a staff report that I haven't had access to? I'm just wondering where I would see that.
You'd like me to answer it, yeah?
And the halftime admin, and I thought we were looking for a full-time assistant finance, so I'm, maybe I'm just behind, I'm not sure where to find all that.
Jeremy, if you want to do a very brief answer, can?
Sure, sure, through the chair, these two positions the council approved in previous budgets, but they were not, they were, they have not been filled at this point, so they're on the books still. They're budgeted, but they haven't been filled, different reasons for different positions, so it was, it was, it was from past meetings.
Okay. Do you have any more cre- questions, Kristy?
No, thank you.
All right. Sharon, are there other hands raised?
I have a phone number, I'm not sure who it is.
Well, what is the phone number?
It ends in seven, seven, five, six.
Seven, five, yes.
Okay, seven, five, six, two, please speak.
Good evening, my name is Caroline Brutongan, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, I was wondering, we have not heard back from all the committees. Was there an update by mail, or can, can somebody update us on that? For the priorities, we have not heard from all the committees, so.
The committees were all invited to the January twenty-seventh meeting, a few were not able to attend, we're engaging with them now, and they will present additional information for the council, we'll bring that to the April meeting and go from there.
And then my second question is, it's been reported that the public is asking more services, and I'm not sure what we are asking in addition to what we were used to, or as was described or promised to us before, I mean, I lived here in twenty-six years and I don't see what kind of additional services we are getting.
Let me, I can try to answer that. This is less, it's a function of two things, it's a function of additional activities performed by staff, which are derived from state mandates, council direction or town manager direction. So in the last five years that I've been here that I can speak to, you know, certainly there's, there's been an increase in the overall number of initiatives that staff is required to manage and perform. The second component is that, I think particularly in the last couple of years, we've seen an increase in public participation in meetings, which is wonderful, it's been fantastic, it's sort of the, the holy grail of government is to get more people involved. That's been wonderful, but as a result of that, that's required more staff time on a variety of questions and engagement and the like. We've also seen, Laura can attest to this, we've seen increases in the, just the number of permits that we receive in, in, in planning and building. Just even today, I heard a number that was just higher than we normally get, we have more than, more, I think it was ten active applications for one, one of our planners, that's not typical. Our communication efforts have greatly increased, where we have a, a member of staff that's dedicated to that, although a number of us participate in those activities, so I could go on and on. But that's our observation based on our experience.
Yes, I can also add to that, I've been here sixteen years, I have, I have been mayor, this is my fourth time, I have exponentially more work this year, it is almost undoable. And the staff is completely stretched, I have a discussion with Jeremy every week saying, shouldn't we hire more staff? We are asked to do more and more, and we have not increased staff. Things, we live in a different world now. This is not the world we lived in in two thousand five when I was elected, or two thousand thirteen when I was elected, or even two thousand eighteen when I was elected. So that is why that comment was made, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, perhaps it's more an observation, could it be that staff and, and council members have to work, well, I know that they have to spend so much time going to these meetings, it's not meetings that necessarily help us, but it's in the greater community, there's so many government entities that I don't believe that the town used to participate with.
I'm gonna interrupt right now, that's absolutely not true, do you have a question that's actually a real question?
Yes, I'm wondering if it's more, if, if, if it's the town, or if it's the, the, the bigger, the greater.
It's the town, and Sharon, let's move on to the next question.
The next speaker is Rusty Day.
Hello Rusty.
Thank you. So I'm gratified to, to see in the priorities that you've are tackling wildfire hazard and risk for the town. And I'm gratified to see that you're going to update the general plan and particularly the safety element to address the state mandate for that, and also the federal mandate for hazard mitigation plan for FEMA funding. You know, both of those are extremely important processes. One of them's being run by San Mateo County, the other one obviously will be run by the town because it's the town's general plan, and so I'd like to reiterate the question that Betsy Morgenthaller began tonight's meeting with. What is the process going to be for updating the general plan safety element? What steps are being taken to include residents and citizens in that process? What professionals are being engaged, and what's the budget for that? That's one question. Second question is, insofar as you're prioritizing the work on wildfire safety, I don't see in the list there anything about pursuing public and private funding and particularly grant funding. There are many opportunities for Portola Valley to expand the funding and resources available to the community to address and deal with these issues. And I don't see a concerted effort to exploit and develop those opportunities. And so my question is, what's being done on that front? So those two questions, please.
Jeremy, did you, did you get the first question, Jeremy?
Yeah, I did, through the chair. It's early to discuss the scope, cost, et cetera, other than to say that is, with all of our processes, it will be a transparent, inclusive process that will include experts in their field to help with, with its development, that's a safety element that is. And then grant funding, we don't, and this might just be a, an insider thing more than anything else, but it, we don't typically write in our priorities, pursue grants, because we are always trying to pursue grants, it's unnecessary to say that, we spend a considerable amount of time looking for grants, grants that are of opportunity, we apply for them. It's a, it's a, it's a huge effort that unfortunately, particularly for smaller cities, doesn't always come through. But I, over the years, we've applied for many grants, unfortunately we don't get a lot of them. But in the last year along, we did receive two grants associated with the housing element update, one grant associated with other land use updates, and one grant from the county that was affiliated with the pedestrian safety work. So we do a lot, we also partner with other agencies, last year, I'm sorry, it was probably closer to two years ago, we applied for a grant for wildfire related work, I suspect we're gonna do that again with our partners, so everyone listening should know that we constantly are looking for great grant opportunities given our limited budget and apply for those ones that we think will be of benefit.
Also, in the grant world, there were, there are two new bills. Also, in the grant world, there were, there are two new bills, climate resiliency bills, one in the House in California and one in the Senate, and I think one is five point five billion, do you know how much the other one is? But both are for sea level rise and wildfire preparation and I guarantee we will go after any money we can go after.
Yeah, I actually, it's funny, even today, staff was discussing a grant opportunity related to replacement of, of older fleet vehicles. So we're exploring, and even though the grant said it might be for particular vehicles, we don't own, we're still exploring it, so a lot of staff time goes into pursuing grant opportunities. Thanks for the questions.
Thanks Rusty, are there other questions, Sharon?
There are no other hands raised.
All right. Let's give it a, let me just give people a few more seconds. I learned how to do this from Suki, who is the clerk to the Board of Supervisors and he also clerks for the FISLer Board and I forget another one I sit on and he always waits a little bit because sometimes people think of a question. Any more hands?
No.
Okay, so I will bring this back to the council for a discussion. How would you like to begin and who would like to begin? Would you like to go down and just look at some of the buckets as Sarah said and, and comment on the buckets?
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
All right, John?
Okay, well, I, I generally always have a little bit of a, of a pause at this point because of the fact that it's easy to start thinking about projects versus the bigger buckets and the, and the, and the goals, so I like the idea of focusing on the goals to, to make sure that we know, know what the overall targets are, but it's often really tempting to jump into projects at this point. So I, I guess looking down the list, the wildfire emergency preparedness, I, I think that covers the portion of it that I would be, that I think it would have been brought up in the recent discussions. I was also interested in making sure that, that these overall areas coordinate well with our committee report requests from a couple of weeks ago. And in particular, I guess you can see that the the work on open spaces caught picked up in the established programming section. Yeah, I, I, I don't have any objections, I'd like to hear other, other people's ideas about what might be missing or or extra or maybe not needed at the moment, but I think it looks like a, a great start. You're muted.
Yeah, I, sorry, 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 are you talking about the wildfire section, John, or all four sections?
I kind of, I kind of brings down through all of them there, so yeah, all, all four of them, I like the overall layout and I like I said, I think some, maybe some more in-depth discussion of each of those would win a lot, some pieces that might not be as, as important or might be missing.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I, I, I think these areas are the important ones, I, I think they're in the right order. I always just struggle with what's, you know, what's not there. And I'm you know, nothing is jumping to mind right now for me either, that there's nothing I'm seeing on here that I feel like needs to be there that isn't there. I mean, I was looking through the committee, you know, the things that committees have identified. And I, you know, I, there are several things on there that aren't in the, are the high level priorities, but I think also most, many of them fall under the established programming, so I'm, I'm still not thinking of anything that, that should be added to this list, I think it's, I think it's in pretty good shape, but I do want to hear what people think.
I think I just have one and this, obviously there's a fine line between the buck bucket and a project because you could argue maybe that you know, the A through C and or D and each of these kind of is more on the project side, but with, having said that, for number two and service delivery, one area I think that should be included is the work on the budget system and reporting, and I know that's something that that subcommittee is working on, but I think there's a lot of opportunity for improvement there. I know you guys are still just getting up, up and running with Open Gov. But I, I think that, that's a, that's an area that should be prioritized.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Sarah, thank you for that, that, that is a great one and it's if, if I can expand on that a little bit, you know, this year is about implementing the new system. System implementation takes a while and then, you know, we're hopeful that next year is really about using the system as robustly as possible. That does a number of things, it reduces staff time and administrative tasks, it focuses the finance director and strategic thinking and forecasting into the future and spending more time on big projects, audits and like. It opens up the transparency tools and it also opens up the ability for the staff to do what I would call typical reporting on both budget and financial issues back to the council over the course of the year in a regular basis, so thanks for that.
But that's the only, only comment I had, otherwise I think it looks good.
Greg?
Yeah, I think they broadly look good and I also been sort of looking at it from the point of view of is, is there anything missing? Is it's easier to look at this and say, oh yeah, this looks right. It's a little bit harder to think of the stuff that's not on there. The one, and, and maybe it does kind of already fit under sustainability and established programming and wildfire emergency prep to some degree. One thing that comes to mind is, you know, the conservation committee for a couple of years now has been coming and it's mentioned under the committee things with the list of improvements that they'd like to see cleaning up some of our big open space properties. And we've, we've done little bits and pieces of that in the last couple of budget cycles. I, I don't know if it's, if, if it needs more work to kind of integrate, you know, the conservation committee's plan with staff's plans for what we will actually do and take on. It, it just, I, I wouldn't want to see too many of those things being kicked too far down the road because the longer we put it off, the worse the situation gets and the harder it is to recover. So, so Jeremy, maybe you can let me know whether you think it, it does deserve its own mention here or if it's something that staff is kind of already considering and will be folded in or maybe Howard.
I can start and Howard can certainly add to it, so under, this is red page twenty two, under four A, the intention under four A was to acknowledge the council's strong support in the last meeting for, you know, pretty robust resource allocation for, for the open space, so that was the intent. As, as we refine the the priorities based on what we hear tonight, it may not even take on this form, I mean, this, this might not even be the right nomenclature and the right way to structure this. Staff spent some time talking about that and we, I think we reached a point where it's like, let's put it out there to see if we're in the right universe and then we can, we can play with it based on what the council says, but that's the intention there. So, you know, to your point, if if it if it helps from the perspective, I, I don't have a better term in my head and I, I hope this is the right one, but from a symbolic point of view to have it totally pulled out in its own bucket, that would be fine, but it's always been the staff's intention to bring back a budget package that really really funds this to the hilt as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, I, I, I think my, my, my comment or thought is, is around not just this year's budget, but essentially around because I think it's probably a, you know, three to five years worth of stuff. Really around not just this year's budget, but kind of scheduling out all that work, so figuring out, okay, what is, taking the, the requests and recommendations from the conservation committee and turning it into an action plan. That calendars out, you know, three or five years or however long it will be to get all of those items done. I, I think that would be a useful product to develop this year as well as, you know, the actual work on whatever items we take on this year, but having that you know, much more concrete plan for this is when we will do each of these pieces. And okay, yeah, if we put that one off for a year, it's not going to get too much worse, those other ones, maybe they can wait two or three years, but these ones we got to do now. So just really kind of nailing down that plan and making it a little more tangible.
Uh, John may have some comments as the liaison to the conservation committee, but one of the one topic that's been discussed, this was two years ago, since this was really starting to come, was whether or not the town should bring on a consultant that can help put that plan together, you know, working directly with the conservation committee and then that there would be a product that staff and then the consultants that we use to manage our properties could, would use. So that is, I think that's a distinct possibility as part of what package we bring back. The town is fortunate that we have great experiences with firms like grassroots ecology, Go Native and others that complement one another, obviously, if it was a large package, we go out for the RFP and see what's out there. But that, I, I think is a real possibility is it, to, to your point. And then we take it from there.
Okay.
Yeah, I could just weigh in, just I second Craig's comments, I was thinking along the same lines when I looked through the list. I was glad to see the four A issue in there, it looked like it covered it, maybe not just exclusively as that, but I think it makes, makes sense to certainly focus on that as we move forward. And in the same vein, I was thinking the communications item on the next line. I'm assuming that includes community outreach and, and efforts to make everything more transparent, as transparent as possible and you know, that, that kind of idea that there's a lot in each of those one word lines there, so.
Yeah, we, you know, we ultimately made a decision that we didn't want to overload this with projects that are things that felt like projects. We wanted to keep it higher level, I mean, partly because this is supposed to be a high level conversation, but also partly you know, the more you put on the page, it can distort the conversation that the council likes to have. You know, and have a broader conversation, so, but within communications, it's it is a whole host of, of activity. You know, and, and I mean, I think that the council certainly understands this, I think the members of the public who are here tonight understand this too, I mean, that we have greatly increased the types and quality of the communication that the town is putting out. So we, we expect to see more of that kind of traditional one-way communication, but then there's also two-way communication and stuff that we haven't done as much, so I, I think that that's that's included, the website update is that rolls out. We're going to learn things about how people interact with the website and there's clearly going to be things that we do around there. So there's a, there's a ton of things, now obviously, again, you know, if there are specific endeavors or projects that the council is looking to ensure are funded and supported that, that should be part of the conversation. So happy to hear those things, but that was, that was like for A, that was the, the notion.
Okay, Jeremy, I, I had a couple of comments or questions, under wildfire, I'm assuming that the insurance what I'm calling looming crisis will be in there, correct? That we seem to be in touch with the insurance commissioner and we're, we're letting him know what's happening as people's insurance policies are not renewed, correct?
I had, I had an engagement two days ago with his deputy about some issues that to, to go through a few of those items, so, so obviously the committees, the wildfire preparedness committee is going to continue to meet and refine the proposals that they brought to council last December. So I would expect those to come back in some form, the discussion, if you remember the last meeting was how many, which one of these should be town-based and which one of these should be fire district-based, so that is ongoing. There's so they'll have a suite of second round recommendations to bring to the council and they're here to meet. They're planning a meeting, I think it for mid-March at this point, so there'll be more to come out on that. Insurance is, is explicit in their charge, so they'll be looking at opportunities there. That could include, you know, continuing conversations with the Department of Insurance and the Insurance Commissioner directly with insurers and Jeff's, Jeff's on the subcommittee that's worked on this, so he may have something to add. It, so there's, there's a lot of contours to that. The, so that's ongoing. And then obviously the emergency preparedness committee continues to meet and, you know, bring other components that are non-fire related to the table, virtual EOC coordination with the new SERP structure and the like.
Jeff, are you going to speak?
Well, I actually had another, something that's not on the list that I'll just maybe suggest and see if people think, I guess it's you know, it's, it's some, it's, it's sort of, you know, live, you know, events, but it's also just sort of live meetings, what, you know, just, just anything that's doing things in person. We've talked about some kind of, you know, outdoor concert gathering sometime later in the summer, we've talked about sort of things that we would do live, you know, like like Zasta Taz is on here from the Parks and Rec Committee or the, the, the town picnic. Just some general thought about when, how and, and, and will we be able to sort of have some, you know, or even would we do our meetings live again, just, just some thought about all those questions about when, when are we actually going to feel comfortable kind of being face to face again, maybe that's something that goes on here?
The, if I may through the chair, I, I've been looking at the roll forward for an opportunity to have a, a more specific conversation with the council around some of these issues a little bit later, probably in the spring. The very important, you know, the next the next month is maybe the most critical month that we've had in COVID for a while. As more people get shots and we read more about the various variants that exist. And that will, I think dictate a lot of what, what is possible, you know, at least in that I would say in the medium term. But absolutely, so if the council has that direction, I'd be happy to, to, we can make that a little more robust, work with the committees on some ideas and then obviously have that engagement with the council on what that would, would look like. But the plan is to come back to the council in the spring and talk about some of these issues, just so there's an expectation that's set with the community about what this could potentially look like and then we can start planning for it.
Well, I was, did you do State of the Valley this year, were you on that conference, Jeff? It went online.
I was not, no.
It was really good and there was a lot of discussion along these lines today.
Okay, I, my, my suggestion would be, it could maybe be a bullet point like, like point E under service delivery if we wanted, but that's, that's a question, do people think it's worth, is it important enough to put on there or do we know that we're going to have that conversation, is it just?
I think it's important. I would like to know what we're doing.
Post-COVID vaccine service return, I kind of thought that's, that was covering that, I don't know, what, what is that if it's not that?
I was thinking that was more staff.
Right, that was intended to try to capture a lot of what I think the council is discussing tonight, so that included, I think, both points with Sarah said. You know, that it would, I'm sorry, what Jeff said, but it also captures just the day-to-day, how this is all going to sort of look and kind of ramping up some of our, our previous activities and and, and the like. That was, that was, that was one of those real broad stroke titles.
Okay, and also under wildfire emergency prep, I am assuming that an evacuation plan and drill will be in that bucket, correct?
Yeah, so the, both B and C, one B and one C will, will include that.
Okay. And there were some other ones, some other stuff I had.
Backtracking a tiny bit, sorry, before we move off of the post-COVID, I just wanted to share a comment from the sorry, Marion to. sorry, um, Marian to.
Go ahead.
But, um, from the creative arts committee, I was going to mention this, um, as a possibility for under number four, but, um, to your, to your question, Jeff, they're assuming, you know, no summer concert series other than potentially just one in the fall. So like in September, and that would be the first and, and, you know, only summer concert series. And it would, you know, they were thinking that would be it for, for this kind of, for this year, more or less, and that they would postpone, um, the PB Palooza until things were fully in the clear.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I was looking, I was thinking of that event that Paige talked about. I was thinking about, uh, like I said, I was thinking about like Zasta Taz from the town picnic, just, just all these various sort of things that nature and science is doing a couple of things online right now that they would like to sort of bring by. I think it'd be great to have some of the nature and science events we used to have live. It's just, it's just a general question. And I mean, it, I'm not adamant about it. It was just suggesting it as another just point that we want to, you know, be thinking about how to, how to get back to face-to-face stuff, so.
If I may through the chair, one of the things at least has been talked about internally, we haven't had significant engagement with the, with the committee chairs just yet. But, you know, the, uh, what, what, what we anticipate with, I think, our experiences over the last year is that as, as we return to a new normal, there's a real pent-up energy to do a variety of things. Um, and, um, uh, my, my expectation is that as things loosen up, the committees, every committee is going to want to do their event or events at around about the same time. Um, and we, um, you know, from a management perspective, one of the things that we've sort of thought about was, well, let's have one big event. Um, and combine the best of all of these events into something really spectacular. Um, I think Paige mentioned it, and this was an idea that the mayor has, has talked about a little bit, this, you know, the renewal event. Um, so that, uh, that, that may be a way, a way to, 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 to do it, uh, but it just depends on how things go.
Yep, I think we all want to do that. I also was another, I totally agree with Craig. I hope that the recommendations from conservation do not sort of fall off the list again. And I like your idea of a work plan. I also, um, I'm not sure where would green building code and reach codes, great, green building, now I can't even remember what it's called.
Green building ordinance.
Green building ordinance and reach codes, does that come under 4C?
That's what I thought.
Yeah, although, you know, our, our hope is that the green building ordinance will be adopted by the council before that we go to the next.
This year, oh, okay. Yes, that would be good.
Yeah, that's what, that, that's our goal. Um, and, uh, but, you know, under sustainability, for instance, it would be something like the climate action plan, which is a huge entity.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so that's, that's where that would fall.
Okay, are there other, are there other thoughts? Or do we feel that this is moving in the right direction?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think overall looks good.
Okay. Then what is the next step, Jeremy?
Uh, well, the feedback was really important and I, we appreciate it. Um, I think we have a good sense of, uh, the high level, uh, areas that the council wishes to focus on, uh, based on the staff, uh, the draft from the staff. Um, so, uh, we'll be coming back to council with this more fully formed in the, in the format that you are accustomed to at a meeting in April. The, um, uh, we'll also be engaging with the committees, uh, to ensure that we're getting, that we've gotten this right and that we, uh, also any budgets that they want to see for their projects are included. Um, so we'll come back to you in April and, uh, uh, have something, uh, for you to adopt. And in the meantime, we'll be able to start constructing, um, so, uh, parts of the budget that relate to consultants, to relate to major projects. Um, that relate to land use around what we heard tonight, that this is really valuable. Thank you.
Okay, no parting thoughts?
Kate. Mary, Darren, we do have one hand raised.
All right. And that is?
Betsy Morgan Taylor.
Betsy.
Thank you so much. Um, this is a general comment, not a specific one. And that is, um, as you're rewriting this for the April meeting, if I were in your shoes and certainly in my shoes, I like it, I'd like there to be some measure of what, what amounts to success. So that, because a lot of these, um, comments are, are relatively neutral. When it says communication sustainability, I would have no means of knowing whether you had met the target. And, and I think it would behoove us to be thoughtful enough about what we're doing, that we know what we're aiming for. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, that was a, that was a very helpful comment. All right. Um, moving on to item five, recommendation by the town manager for an extension of local emergency declaration in response to coronavirus.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the management team for coming to the meeting tonight, too.
Um, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So starting on red page thirty-four, now this would have been a consent item, um, uh, for us, uh, but we did make some changes uh, to the subcommittees that were formed in March of twenty twenty, based on, um, uh, former, uh, council member Wangert's, um, departure from the council and also the change, um, uh, to Mayor Dernwin or Vice Mayor Hughes. Um, the committees, uh, meet as needed, excuse me, the subcommittees meet as needed to assist with the COVID-related service delivery and other issues. Um, but that's the big change here. We are recommending that we extend, uh, the emergency declaration out another ninety-six days. The reason that is an odd number just corresponds with, um, June first. Um, so we would bring back, um, if it's necessary, the emergency declaration at the meeting, the second meeting in May. And that is it, thank you.
All right, are there any questions about this item? Okay, Sharon, does anyone from the public have a question or comment?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, back to the council. Does someone want to make a motion?
So move.
Jeff, thank you, second.
Second.
Craig, thank you, discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alex.
Hi.
Councilmember Wordacaw.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Durwin.
Hi. And now we are already at committee reports. Who would like to go first? Okay, Jeff.
I, I had one, um, the day after our last meeting on the eleventh, uh, Jeremy Brandy and I, and, and others who I'm probably forgetting, uh, John Myers, uh, met with, uh, some of our, our big field users, uh, so Little League Soccer, um, uh, the tennis and pickleball folks, um, just, just going over kind of where things were going to, you know, stand this spring, um, or this year. And, um, I thought it was just, I mean, just, just a, nothing too earth shaking out of that. And Jeremy, correct me if I'm leaving anything out, just, um, just touching based on where they were. They're, you know, they're obviously, their ability to do things is in flux right now with us moving to red. And, um, we're talking, we're, we're still talking them a little bit about what's, what's actually going to happen on our fields. Are they actually going to be able to, to stage games, which it looks like possibly they will. We're not, not a hundred percent sure, but it looks like, so moving towards sort of more involved practices with contact and, and, and the actual games within the county. So, um, that's the one meeting I've had the last two weeks.
Thanks. Let's see, Sarah.
Um, I, the only meeting I had was, uh, cultural arts, and I think I pretty much just mentioned the highlight of it before discussing what the potential plans might be going, moving, moving forward. Um, there was discussion, there's an interest from a couple of the members to, um, I want to get the, to do, um, uh, another youth photo exhibit. I guess this is something that they did last year and they're, and in their brainstorming, it seems like something that might potentially be something they could execute in a COVID-safe way. Um, so, uh, two of the, the, um, committee members, I think, are going to be pursuing that. Um, and I think, uh, it was a meeting where they passed baton from Paige to, uh, John Badger. Um, and that was pretty much, pretty much it.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I, I forgot the other meeting I had. Can I, can I do it now or?
Yeah, please.
Okay, sorry. Um, I also, on the same day as that meeting, actually, the nature and science committee had a meeting. Um, and, uh, let's see, but, um, Yvonne Trice is going to be the chair and with Bonnie Crater kind of assisting her. Bonnie's actually doing kind of like doing kind of, kind of the admin for, for Yvonne. Um, the big thing they did was they've actually started or restarted the, um, like, you know, they've, they've had like a little town speaker series. And so sometime around the time we were going into quarantine last March, they were about to hold an event with Roger Romani. He's an astrophysicist at Stanford, uh, talking about black holes, and they have rescheduled that for next month. Um, not sure if I have the date off the top of my head, but you'll be hearing about that. They had a couple of other speakers lined up and they're actually, they, they want to do these as Zooms, uh, like a series of Zoom meetings. And hopefully they'll have maybe three or four of them over the rest of the year, maybe, maybe more. I mean, just depending on how kind of ambitious they get, but, um, they were sort of, it was, it was nice because it was a very, it's like very real sort of thing to bite off for somebody to organize a Zoom meeting and run a Zoom meeting. And as long, and they had several, like, I think Leslie Field is going to talk there, and then they had someone else kind of interested. So they've, they've got a little, they've got like a mini-speaker series already. They might get a few more people. It was just kind of a nice, um, they kind of jumped back into things after, sort of, they haven't been doing anything for a while, but they, they got back on the horse. So they're, uh, they're up and running again.
And is Carrie going to help get the word out for those events?
I believe so. I, I, I touched base with her about that and, yes, she's, she's aware of the first one at least and, and, yes.
Black holes.
Mm-hmm.
I love that.
Mm-hmm.
And speaking of which, John Richard.
Black hole now, okay. Okay, I had.
Deep and mysterious.
Oh, yeah, that's gotta be it. Uh, Planning Commission, it was, uh, pretty much just a discussion of upcoming projects for the next, uh, few months, or maybe a year, actually, it's quite a few items on there. Um, just outlining where that body was going to be going and, um, yeah, that's pretty much it. Um, had a conservation committee meeting that, um, it was actually fairly quick, uh, two new, new members, uh, were at their first meeting, including my daughter, which is pretty fun. And, um, so great. There was discussion about, uh, rodenticide and the broom pole, which is coming up next week. They're going to do it similar to the way they did last year, was kind of letting people go out and do their thing and putting anything that they pull in the right of way in places where, or can come pick it up and, uh, I guess they actually got more people turning out last year than they have ever before, when they tried to organize it in one day, but, um, in, in person. So that's a good thing. And then, uh, Marianne and I attended a, an interesting Zoom with the, uh, with the, uh, union rep for workers at the Sequoias, uh, talking about their new contract that apparently is coming up soon. And there's some concern there about how that is going to work out for them. So that's an ongoing thing, uh, which I think we'll hit more about. That was it.
Craig.
Um, I had just SEC on Monday, uh, which there was a discussion of a horse barn up on skyline. Highly eventful meeting. Um, and that's it. Um, I've got a couple more this week coming up, but that was it for the past two.
All right, well, I have a whole pile. But I'll, I'll try not to get into the weeds here. So the CCG meeting on the eleventh, let's see, there were a couple of presentations. One was an update on the one-on-one express lanes project and it, everything's going well. I think that the first leg's going to open in the fall and that will be really interesting. Uh, there was a presentation on San Mateo County Energy Watch. Um, the ledge report, which is always seems like old news by the time I get it to you guys. Uh, let's see. They, you know, it was sort of a, a broad discussion about, you know, all the housing initiatives, um, the programs to support Rena and also enforce um, the cities that do not get their housing elements in. Um, the bills of interest are SB seven Atkins, SB nine, but, uh, which are housing bills, but, um, they're going to wait to discuss SB nine winners bill, uh, but it's, they said it's a little early to discuss it now. They also talked about, um, a stormwater management and permitting bill. And, um, there was a recommendation to support ACA one from, that has to do with reducing voter thresholds on construction projects. Let's see what else. But that was about it. Let's see what else. And then there was a discussion about the San Mateo County Comprehensive Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan that was last updated in two thousand and eleven, so this will be a very big update. Oh, and there was also a presentation by, um, Matt Fabry on Sustainable Streets Master Plan, which is about complete streets with green infrastructure. And he had the most amazing tracking tool. So Jeremy, can you reach out to Matt and ask him how we can get that tracking tool? This is something I know we could use here. Everybody was just amazed by it. I think Howard could use it. And we took nominations for chair and vice chair. Uh, the current chair and vice chair were nominated. And then the chair announced that there is a search committee to replace the ED. And Sandy, the ED, talked a lot about, there's a whole lot of money that we're getting for, um, there were, there's a whole lot of money out there for transportation. And we will try to get some. See, and then there was an express lanes meeting the next morning. This was entirely about their, the equity study. Um, we have an equity study going for the express lanes. I think it is the most comprehensive equity study done for a toll road in the country, if not the world. It's pretty amazing. Anyway, they, they came up with three, um, I think they had ten suggestions. And the, I think the three or four that they settled on were a seventy-dollar toll tag. So that would mean that people who qualify in there is very strict criteria to qualify. You have to be, I think, I forget what level of the federal poverty level, but it's uh, seventeen percent of San Mateo County residents are eligible for, for this, by the way. So one was a seventy-dollar toll tag one time. One was, um, a cash on Clipper benefit. So if you have a Clipper card, you get a cash on that. One was, uh, bicycle pedestrian and transit safety improvements. And I think there was also a carpool rewards. So they're going to take that out to the community and the communities of concern and see what they say. We've also got an equity advisory committee. And then, uh, I guess they'll come back with what they feel is the strongest. That was it, let's see what else. And then Fizzler, flood sea level right, flood and sea level rise resiliency district. There was only one item on this agenda, and this was to adopt a resolution for the Bayfront Canal and Atherton Channel Project. So this is our first construction project in the district. And they still need a few permits from Fish and Wildlife and regional water quality, but they're pretty much ready to go. Uh, and this is where, uh, the chair, who's Dave Pine, talked about the major climate resiliency bond coming out of the House, not the one in the Senate. Um, and again, as I said, there's money for all sorts of things, flood protection, wildfire, improving water supply, regional, um, climate stuff. So the district should be able to apply for some of that money. And I'm hoping that Portola Valley can apply for some of that money. What else? No, I don't think anything else. No, I don't think anything else that you would be interested in. Oh, they did talk about the local hazard mitigation plan, which, yes, yes. So everybody has to do that, right? Throughout the county.
That's correct. Yeah. And it's managed by the, the county.
Right. Okay. And then there was a Resource Management Climate Protection Committee meeting that had two really good presentations. One was about the affordability of electrification, including rooftop solar onsite batteries and financing. So essentially these two people in Menlo Park did this incredible study modeling what it would, okay, so it would be a 1500 square foot house and with rooftop solar and battery backup. And they would replace, this is a house, not at all, you know, just a house, a regular house. It would get replaced, the gas furnace with an air source heat pump, replace the gas dryer with an electric dryer, replace the gas range with an induction cooktop, replace the gas water heater with a heat pump water heater and, and then have a charging station. And they worked it all out so that if you got a loan, you would come out almost revenue neutral on the whole thing. Now, this is on a 1500 square foot house. It did not include having to upgrade the electrical panel. And it did not include having to redo the roof. If you're interested, I can get the slides to you. The Sustainability Committee was very interested, so I got the slides for them. And then the other presentation was by Raphael Race. Yes. And it was about housing, addressing housing, considering trends in reach codes and electrification. And this was also a very good presentation with the challenges to do this, such as contractors not being familiar. So they worked out all the challenges, all the obstacles, and then they gave solutions. And I have the, and some of the challenges were the contractors, EV charging costs, central hot water systems. And that's where, oh, and site conditions. And that's where I learned about a new method called sewage heat capture. You know about that, right, Jeff?
That's a new sewage heat capture. Okay, no.
Capture. And it has to do with the water heater, then the, the.
Oh, waste hot water, yeah, waste hot water or hot water recapture. Yes, yes.
Shower, the washing machine.
Yes, yes.
Gets recaptured. It looks fascinating.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's not a mandatory measure in the energy code, but it's a prescriptive one now. And I, yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's for residential, it's not a big deal, but for some commercial and industrial uses, it could be huge.
Yeah.
Oh, and just in case anyone's wondering, Raphael Race is the Program Director of Peninsula Clean Energy, which is why Marion was mentioning, I, we, I work with him often.
And I remember when I first entered the sustainability world in 2006, I remember meeting him at a conference. And I heard Al Gore speak. Yeah. So that was just in the seat of this stuff. So what else? Tom Francis from Bosque gave a, just a, you know, three minute report. They obviously got rain in January, but we're still a drier today. However, hedge hedgey, because of the way that it's designed with the water bank, could reach 99 to 100% full. So we're going to be okay. However, San Francisco still could call for voluntary rationing. They won't make that call until April. Things look a little better, but they need, we need more rain. And I think anybody could figure that out without listening to me tell you. Then the Sustainability Committee met. Oh my God, it was a wild ride. I don't know what happened, but everybody was talking at once. Nobody was following the agenda. It was, it was completely crazy. I, I had Brandy and I felt like we had to take naps or like go drink espresso after this meeting. But anyway, let me try to see what they talked about. Randy gave a few updates. Such as where did the styrofoam go? Remember when everybody took their styrofoam over to the church at Ladera? And they had too much styrofoam. It went to the Newby Island Recovery Site. I have no idea where that is. She talked about working, working on the green building ordinance and the reach codes and that she's getting an intern. So that's great news. The subcommittee work, I have no idea. They were all over the place. Stefan was talking about if there's a power outage, where does the solar power go? I mean, there were all these almost esoteric questions. Should we look into batteries? There's this gadget. Oh, did you talk to Stefan about the gadget, Jeff?
I haven't talked to him about it yet. Yeah.
There's apparently this gadget that could protect the lines during a power outage that will keep your solar panels going. Cause right now they, the power does not go into the grid, right?
Well, the grid is, the grid is shut off. You, you don't want your power going into the grid for safety reasons.
I don't know what this gadget is, but he was very excited about it.
Yeah, I need to, I need to follow up with someone to figure out what he means either. Maybe there's, I mean.
Yeah. And there, there was a lot of, oh, no, I'm not even going to talk about it. If you want to get offline, I'll tell you. And Stefan and Walt are still working on this project where they will come up with, you know, battery backup in an emergency from like a hundred dollars to the whole thing for the house. So they discussed that. And they elected officers. So Walt Hayes is the new Chair and Stefan Unash is the new Vice Chair. And they're, they changed the charter. They're going to be meeting once a month. See. Okay, I did attend one search committee meeting for the ED at CCG and we are going to use the HR person in the county rather than hiring a private recruiter because the HR process is free and they understand CCG and they've done a good job in the past. Oh, and then I had a call with, for, I got approached about talking to Cal Water and it, I really, none of us were really sure what it was about, but it ended up being a call with Dawn Smithson from Cal Water, Rob Sealy from Cal Water. And then these two consultants, Jim Kinnin and Leslie Rodriguez, who work for Rob Sealy, because Rob Sealy has such a giant territory. He's the government affairs guy, then he needs some helpers. So basically they just said the 2018 rate case is finalized. The rates in our area are actually going to be decreased a tiny bit. And then they talked about, you know, what they asked for and what they got in terms of capital projects, which led into our smart AMI smart meters as they said, absolutely, it's going to happen. We will get smart meters this year. We being Bear Gulch, Portola Valley. That's it. Only Portola Valley. And it's going to take some time to install the software, teach people how it works. You know, the whole infrastructure thing, but they said it is going to happen. I don't think Brandy believes it, but they said it's going to happen. And what else? He also talked a lot about the, all the infrastructure improvements they made from the last fire season and all the things that they learned. And I'm thinking that it might be interesting to bring them to a council meeting because they do a presentation on that. They also talk about, especially since the Texas crisis, people are worried about not just the power, but the water. They feel like they're really in good shape. Or a fire. Okay. And then I guess the last thing is that I, I attended virtually the state of the valley. It was held yesterday morning and this afternoon. Generally, it's just one day in San Jose. And I absolutely think it is one of the best conferences out there. So please take advantage sometime and go to one of these. But the speakers today were, there was a really good speaker yesterday, Professor Sally Benson from Stanford, Silicon Valley and the Battle for the Planet. And she was hopeful. This is what was incredible. All the speakers I listened to, you know, went through the horrors of, of the last year and there's the horrors of climate change or whatever and felt hopeful. Dr. Sarah Cody spoke, the Santa Clara Health Officer, and she feels really positive about the future. There was this man from Ben Trinell from Gensler. He's an architect. It's called the Future of the Workplace. It was a very different discussion about the future of the workplace because it was more about how you're going to design workplaces. He talked about front porches where so, you know, buildings like in urban areas might, the front of the buildings might be a plaza for people to gather or, or buildings in neighborhoods where the neighbors could actually come into the first floor of the building. He talked about the way that people will want to work is going to be collaborative. And so spaces will be more open and, and not as individual. He said they polled workers 85%, these were young, these were millennials, said they want to come back to work four days a week and they want to come back to work because they want, they don't want to be isolated. This is what I keep telling Jeremy. People don't want to sit at home all the time. People want to go back to work, but it's going to look different. And then the last speaker was Julian Castro, who was the Housing Secretary under Obama, and he was just phenomenal. That guy is so good. And he talked about, let me see what his, trying to remember what they called it, talked about a lot of things. I think he talked about, he talked about what we've learned in the last year and how we can apply it. And he talked about, I can't find it. It was kind of the same across the board. It was about what we've learned. We've learned that we're all connected, you know, what we do affects other people. It affects people on the other side of the world. What we learned was that we have a social system that is not equitable. Everybody doesn't have the, doesn't get the same treatment or the same service and we have to deal with that. We learned about that racial inequity is happening across the board still and it's systemic and we have to deal with that. But it was all about resilience and moving forward and so much about being together. People want to be together. People want to help each other. People want to be kind. I, I, it was, it was really nice. I, I left feeling good. Jeremy, it's your time for your report.
Thank you so much. Just a few items tonight. I've started to attend committee and commission meetings to discuss the small scale donation program that the council reviewed at the last meeting. I'm very happy to say that there's been universal positive comments on the program. So anticipating a lot of ideas from the committees that can be used as the program gets developed. Been holding a lot of meeting greets with new committee members. John's joined me for a number of those, because it's just been his committees. It just kind of happened to work out that way. They've been lovely. Something that we've introduced over the last year, just to welcome people here and thank them for their, their service and their time. I really appreciate getting to know people, particularly now during COVID. So been enjoying that. I think I mentioned in a previous meeting that the Resource Conservation District of San Mateo County has expanded its sphere of influence to include our community and others west of Highway 280. I spoke to the Executive Director, Kellex Nelson, recently and invited, invited her to come to a future council meeting to share their, what, what they do and, and the programming that might be available to us. So that should be meeting in April. Excuse me. No, I think it's the second meeting in March. The next Mayor's Coffee, we're going to be scheduling that for April sometime. Really appreciate everybody coming to the last one that we talked about. So that's going to be coming up. I wanted to close my report tonight with just something very lovely. I want to share my screen if that's okay with everyone. This is a picture of Ford Field that was sent to us by a resident coach and a commissioner of the Little League. And if I can just read a little bit from one of three emails that we received over the last couple of days. This was to me and Howard and Justin. Thank you so much for the effort you and your team have put into the field. It is an absolutely fantastic condition and I was fortunate to experience this with our little Alpine Little League team this week. Ford is in the best condition since the reopening a few years ago. You can imagine how marvelous it felt to take the field in the beautiful weather and with the kids so excited after a year away from baseball. Thank you for your support and investment here. It is genuinely appreciated. So I, I, I wanted just to conclude my comments with a huge thank you to the Public Works Team, particularly Justin Bigsby, who's responsibility as recreational coordinator is to do these things. I've been in town every day this week and it has been a joy driving by the facilities and seeing more and more people out there. So just a big thank you to the staff and I'm glad people are appreciating the work. Thank you.
Great. Okay, digest, February 11. Is that the first one?
It is. Is anyone going to the Council Cities meeting on Friday? Are you?
There was supposed to be a city selection committee meeting. I can't even remember what the heck that seat is. Oh yeah. Okay. It's the Northern Cities TAC that Rico Medina held until he was elected to Sam Trans. Okay, so it was Mark Nagalis from South San Francisco, running against Cliff Lance from Brisbane, but Cliff just dropped out. Yep.
That's easy.
Yeah, but there is a program, oh, the one last month. It was Broadway singer from Brisbane. Turns out that I'm not a big show tunes kind of fan.
Okay.
I can't remember what this program is, but it's not long.
It was, it's San Carlos. It's, I just, I was just.
It's about there.
The industrial area.
Yeah.
Yep.
That sounds like a barrel of monkeys. Okay, what is the, what's the next one? I can't even find it.
The 18th. Red, Red 51.
Anything anybody wants to discuss or pull off? All right. Then I believe we can adjourn.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for coming.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you. Good night.